Recently, we've had a dispute of a medical treatment for services rendered for an emergency call. No medical service was rendered, so we are going, I am going to make a motion that we rescind the charges for the medical treatment on ticket number 23-24-139, semi-colon, one.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion carries that that bill will be rescinded. I spoke with the animal control officer this week regarding what they see as a potential improvement for the town of getting a kennel that we can hold animals for residents. Right now, when an animal like a dog has gotten loose or something like that, the procedure that we do is to relocate the animal to the Animal Welfare Society down in Kennabunk. That's quite a drive, especially if you're a resident, and especially if you're an ACO officer who's, you know, making that drive on town time. As far as a kennel goes, we're talking about like a chain link containment area with a shelter that the dog can stand until the owner is able to pick them up. That is something that we will consider for the budget for next year, but as, just so that the residents know, we are thinking about that. I think that's it for Select Board weekly activities. Did Tammy or Jason have anything for weekly activities for the Select Board?
Well, we started initial discussions on the purchase or looking to purchase a used town truck. In the state inspections that we just did last week, we ended up losing one of the trucks. It's just, it's quite rusty. The body can't side dump anymore, which is part of the sander, so it's been repaired. It needed a kingpin and a small cross member, and they needed to weld the body from side dumping, and it's good for one more year. We can utilize it as a dump truck, but as far as plowing purposes and sanding, it's kind of game over. So we're in the hunt, or we're looking, we've got to have a special town meeting to allot the funds to be able to purchase a used truck. With that being said, it's not gonna, we're not looking for a $350,000 truck. It's, we're hoping that we can find something maybe 30 to 60 range to get us into something a lot newer and more reliable than we have, because the last thing we need to do is not have roads taken care of over the winter. Yeah, so that about sums up the activities. Anything else to add, Tammy? In chambers anyways?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head.
I know.
I mean, there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes right now.
Yeah, it's been pretty crazy.
Yeah, I mean, working on, you know, not building the budget for next year yet, but certainly compiling information for it. So that will be forthcoming in the next probably three to five weeks, once it's all done, so that people can look at it and know what we've been paying year to year, and then hopefully be able to look at next year's budget and have a lot of information to look at, just to go on, you know, so that we're not just looking at this year's budget and going, what do we do next year? So just getting as much information together as we can get, just to be more informed and to be able to get that out to the people. We've certainly heard a lot about the taxes, and we understand, really we do, and we don't want to put undue pressure on our residents, so we really want to come at this with the best information we can have and let the people decide what they're going to do. So, once we get information together, I think it'll be a good thing for people to look at and have some robust discussions around it.
Also, we've been, yeah, the behind the scenes stuff. We also got to look into the form of government change as we get closer. We have to do that minimum three months before town meeting, so in the next month or two here, we really got to get that aspect of it rolling as we roll into the town manager form of government and also...
Yeah, that's right. Thank you, because we were talking about that today and piggybacking a couple of different things in this next special town meeting that we want to have. First, for the people to release funds for a truck that we've been looking at. We don't know if it'll still be there when we finally have the meeting and let people know, but it'll at least release some so that if another truck comes up, we can find one before winter and make sure that we have a good fleet ready to hit the roads when it's necessary, and then bring up the town government and have a discussion about that as well at the same time. Make it worth your while, you know, not to come out just for one issue here and one issue there, but to have a couple of things that have been sitting on the burner that need discussion. And unfortunately, time flies, you know, and we need to have a town form of government meeting before the first week of December, and it's gonna, that's gonna be here before you know it. So we might as well put a couple of, couple, three warrants together for you guys to discuss and let us know what you want us to do.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Jason.
Updates? No?
Well, yes, but I just want to let the folks know that Madison Moody, our rec director, is here. He is going to speak for what's going on in Parks and Rec right after Jason gives us an update for code enforcement and fire and EMS. Unfortunately, Public Works had a slight emergency this evening, so we do not have a report from Public Works. Jason?
Yes, I thought so, with Sean this evening. But anyways, the permits for code enforcement from 7/24, three growth, six building permits, one electrical, one plumbing, one shore land, for a total of 11 from July 24th, and the fees are $3,818.60 from them. Year-to-date is over $101,840 brought in by the code office. Gravel pit inspections are all complete for the year, so congrats to Craig for getting out and getting it done. He has also completed eight other inspections this week as well. They've been pretty busy, according to Judy. They're looking into a situation regarding the lack of electrical inspector. Several of the small towns, Buxton, Waterboro, do not require electrical permits for single-family homes. They do not have inspectors either. This would reduce the revenue with the code enforcement, but it would be hard to change for, charge for electrical permits if they do not provide inspection. So that's some of what they're trying to deal with right now, where Marcel is retired, and we did do an interview, but they chose not to. Trying to find an inspector is hard in this state. You know, they're pretty stacked already to take on a town as another, so we're still back and forth with it, with the, so we'll have more updates as we go forward. Fire and EMS, we could report ending July 27th. They've 13 calls, month-to-date was 69 calls. Three of them are fire, 10 of them are EMS for this week. Year-to-date's 437. There was two vacant shifts over the last week, but it was, looks like Emo covered them. As far as trainings, Sunday, they spent 12 hours pump training. Wednesday, they were at, they were in-house here for a three-hour scene size-up training, and I think they ended over at Sleeper's Market doing a scene size-up for that building. So, out in the public away, they had two members attending EVAC class, which is Emergency Vehicle Operations. Tuesday evening, they attended an apparatus placement class hosted by the Hollis Fire and Rescue Department. Equipment, they had a leak develop in the house air compressor that keeps air to the trucks. Looks like Emo has corrected the water separator and it's back up and running. The new engine had a pump test on Friday and passed with no issues. I am understanding that you guys currently tonight are putting the, all the equipment back on it to...
Some.
Some of the equipment, okay, so it's in process. We should see the new engine hopefully in the next week or two after lettering and radios anyways, but they are, they're going to town. I think that's it. I didn't miss anything there, and we will open the floor to Mr. Madison for his update.
Thanks for having me. So the Parks and Recreation Department has a really, has had a really busy summer so far. This summer, we're about to finish tomorrow our fourth week of summer camp. This summer, we have over 119 children signed up between the six weeks, and we're averaging about 90 kids per week. I have 14 staff working between the two groups. Seven staff cover kindergarten through third grade, and seven staff cover fourth through eighth grade. One group is right in our camp building down at Moimadaio, like we've done in the past, and then we have another group based out of HB Emory this summer, but we have a bus every day that can bring them right down to the beach so that they can swim. We've been doing one field trip a week as well. Today, the younger group went to Smiling Hill Farm, and yesterday, the older group went to Bolarama and Sanford. We've also gone to Indian Cellar in Hollis, Pond and Cherry Park in Bridgeton. Both groups got to go to Fort Williams. Next week, we'll be going to Splash Town, and for our last week, we'll be going to Happy Wheels. Of those 119 children signed up this summer, 82 are from Leamington, right here in Leamington, and about 60, 60 of them are signed up for all six weeks. Everyone else is picked in individual weeks. This summer, as of right now, we haven't brought in all the revenue quite yet, but we're right over $70,000. That's up from $49,500 last summer. Our total for the Recreation Department right now, as far as revenue, is $108,168. And then for Moimadaio Beach, we are at $27,677 for the season so far, and we have a month left. Last year total, we brought in $28,377, so doing much better than last summer.
A lot warmer this year.
Yeah, way less rain.
Yeah.
Way less rain. Yeah, so I'd just like to thank my staff, because it was a big change going to the two groups this summer, and they've done awesome, taking on more kids and the back and forth between the beach and the school. Everyone's doing really well.
Absolutely.
Having a lot of fun. What else? It's not ready quite yet, but we are finishing up a new website for the Parks and Recreation Department, hosted through MyRec. This is going to give us the ability to do all online registration. It'll give families a total, total for the year as far as their taxes right on the website. Every family will have their own individual account. I can do mass emails. The website hosts descriptions of all of our locations in town, and I will also be able to do online reservations for both the Old Town Hall and the Pavilion and picnic areas at Moimadaio. So that's going to help tremendously, and I'm hoping, hoping by the end of the month that we'll be ready. Soccer registration opened today for fall for pre-K through seventh grade, and then tomorrow, our before and aftercare registration will start for the upcoming school year. Yeah, and we're starting to plan fall activities for the before and aftercare children. Yeah. That's where we're at right now. It's been a crazy, busy summer.
Wow, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much for the dedication, because that is, that's a lot.
Yes, yes.
That's a lot.
Yeah, no, I can't, can't thank my staff enough for helping me this summer, so...
Absolutely. We thank them as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madison.
Does, we don't have much of an audience here today, but does anyone have any questions for Madison while we have him? No? All right.
Thank you for coming in, Madison.
Yes, thank you.
We appreciate it.
And thank you for helping to build that community, because Parks and Rec is, you know, a linchpin as far as building community goes.
It's great to hear the community talk about it. There's been a lot of talk, just walking into Sleeper and the stores, everybody's like, you know, it's, what a, what a difference you've made in the last couple of years. It's just crazy, so we thank you, truthfully.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Informational bulletin. Select Board Office hours are Thursday, 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. The on-air meeting time is Thursdays at 7:00 p.m. Transfer Station hours are Saturday and Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and Wednesday from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. A transfer station sticker must be attached to your vehicle's windshield for the disposal of all items. Transfer Station stickers are available at the town office for $20. No sticker is required to use the swap shop, and the transfer station does not accept brush or yard clippings. General Assistance Office. Applications are available anytime from the town clerk's office during their normal business hours. Applications must be filled out and accompanied with supporting documentation and must be signed. Planning Board meets at the municipal complex, the First and Third, Monday evenings at 7:00 p.m. In Parks and Rec's Cards and Coffee is held at the Old Town Hall Building every Wednesday from 9:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Come meet some new folks, play some games. If you have questions or suggestions, please reach out to Madison Moody, our rec director, at m dot moody at leamingtonmain dot com, or leamingtonmain dot gov. We will go ahead and open the meeting to the public if anyone would like to comment or ask any questions, please, and state your name for the record.
Laura Sullivan. I just have a couple of curiosity questions. So a lot of these meetings I come to, and it seems like in the last several months, we've had a lot of ACO requests. In years past, the ACOs that have served Leamington, do they just bring their own equipment?
No. No, these...
Do we have equipment to give them, or, so why are we getting so many requests for new pieces of equipment for ACO?
In years past, the ACO position was not as involved as the new one is. The new one, our new ACO is trying to be more involved in the position. He's doing as much as he can to, you know, get people to, or, you know, license their dogs and such, and the equipment that we've had in the past for the ACO has not been much.
So what did they put their animals in before? Like, how did they transfer them to the welfare society?
They would use like a little, like a little dog, you know, kennel box to bring animals to the Animal Wildlife or Welfare Society.
Were they ours or were they theirs? Because that's what I'm curious. He wants a, he wants a new transfer box, correct, to bring...
No, no, we have, we have them on site at the Old Town Hall in the basement.
You're asking about the kennel?
Yes. I'm curious to...
Listen, sorry, I don't want to overstep.
For some clarification about that purchase order request.
Like the little, you know, carriers for animals, that works well for transporting an animal, but if you were going to hold an animal for any amount of time, you couldn't leave it in a...
Okay, so that's what he's looking for, is something to keep here to hold them?
Like a built chain link enclosure.
To keep here in town so that people can come pick up their animals up here rather than the welfare society.
Correct.
Transfer, okay. That's why I just wanted, didn't know if there was something he was putting in his vehicle to transfer them there?
Oh, no.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I guess I should have been more clear about that.
And there's no PO. This is something that he's asking about in his budget for next year.
That's fine.
He was just bringing it up, yeah.
That clarification is a lot better, because I was thinking, how would we be transporting them?
We were talking about it. It's nothing elaborate. It's like, you know, you go to, like...
No, I get it. That makes sense.
You know, Harbor Freight or Tractor Supply, and they sell them. They're not over a buck. It's just, right now, when he takes a dog, he's got to, or picks one up, say, your dog left, and he finds it, he's got to run it all the way down to Kennabunk.
Right.
And it's an inconvenience for you, because now you've got to go to Kennabunk to get your...
No, that makes sense. I think now that you clarified what that is, I wasn't quite understanding what...
I'm sorry about that.
That's fine. That's fine. That's good. Anyway, disregard. Strike that last comment. So then my next question away from ACO, it's just, a couple of weeks ago, we had this discussion, we had a couple of folks speak from Department of Public Works, and I'm just looking for your thought process, because I don't quite understand. So we gained a new engine for the department, and our one that's going out of service, the head of the Public Works was interested, interested in that chassis because of the shape that it was in and the way it was kept, and he's looking to build a new vehicle. But in that discussion that night, we had a disgruntled employee speak and a past employee speak, and all of a sudden, within the meeting, it turned to, instead of giving it to Sean, we're going to sell it or put it out to bid? Because here's, just let me finish my thought process while I'm thinking about this, so there's a lot going on up here, so I can understand. So I'm thinking about this chassis, that's an older one, that typically spent most of its time housed, not out on the salt roads, occasionally going out in the winter. Probably a better chassis than you're going to find on any used vehicle that is out on all seasons. And we all know the talent down there. He can build it from up, and we know the disgruntledness, they're tired of working on broken stuff and this, that, and the other thing. But if you have a chassis that's in mint condition, and you're going to build it up with all new, more newer parts, he's not going to go out and throw older parts onto a new chassis, but now we're going to look for a used vehicle that's going to have a weathered chassis, that's going to break down and do exactly what they don't want to work on. Is that kind of where we're going with that? Because I'm...
Okay. Well, the two apples and oranges. The chassis that you're talking about, it's going out to bid. Now, Sean, yes, needs another chassis to finish his. It, if he wants to bid on it, it wouldn't be given to him. That's not, that's not even what we had talked about in chambers before that. It was something he was going to purchase from the town, from the fire department. With that being said, after the discussion, we deemed it, I just figured, we needed an engine right off, because this one ain't going to last. We can deal with the truck. The other truck that we're talking about, after the inspection, it's a dual-wheeled dump.
I'm really actually not even talking about that one, Jason. I'm, I...
Yeah, but this is where this other one's coming from. So the single, to build this other one, you'd still only have a single-wheel truck.
Right.
The other one is, what they do is Blaise Whitney and Dave Whitney out of Cornish. They buy municipality trucks, they take them home, they refurbish them, and then they sell them. The one I went up and looked at is a 2008 Mac RG7. It's got a stainless steel body that doesn't even have a ding in it. Drop-in sander, stainless seal. It's got a power angle plow wing, automatic. It's spotless. It was, it's a very nice truck. Definitely twice the truck that we have currently.
Yep.
It's the cheaper alternative right now for longevity. If he was to build another truck, it would only be a single axle. It's not, it's not capable of hauling and doing the workload that the one we just basically lost as a plow truck.
Okay, so I guess my thoughts on this were before I even knew about the not passing.
Yeah.
So I've just been thinking about since they said this. So if he wanted this, again, before this truck not passing, he obviously had a plan for it. So if we send it out to bid, we're probably not going to get the value from an outside bid than the savings that we could have if we kept it and let him bid on it, I guess, if you'd say, or give it some kind of...
Right. With us putting this stuff out to bid, just like with Buxton and the way we ended up with the engine, that engine that we bought originally went out to bid, they get a $5,000 bid, they said no. So we have the availability to say, if somebody says, oh, I'll give you $100 bucks, no. You know, we're looking to get, we want to get value out of it.
So he'll still have the opportunity to bid on it?
He still has the opportunity. If for some reason, we don't, you know, if we get a $500 bid and he wants to spend $5,500, seven grand, vice versa, that's, that's on him to do. We were looking at the longevity, number one, taking and having to put this truck together.
Yep.
You know, it's a timeframe. You know, we still got to, the other one is still going to be, I think, things to be finished on it before it hits the road plowing. So, and instead of taking the work, Public Works crew for 40, 80 hours and trying to build a truck, it's just, and it's not going to be the truck we need.
No, and I get that piece of it. It was just, I was kind of a little disturbed at the aggressiveness of the employee that came up, and all of a sudden, okay, maybe we should put it out to bid. It seemed like there was a thought process change because you got some feedback, which I'm not disagreeing with their feedback at all.
Yeah, no, go ahead, Sean.
I'm not disagreeing with their feedback and their being, you know, frustrated. We're all frustrated in our jobs on some level, right? It just, it seemed like all of a sudden, it just was a turn of, and I'm just looking for a thought process. I'm not judging or making, I'm just kind of like, wow, that really went a different direction.
In that meeting, after that individual spoke, he had brought up things that we couldn't answer...
Right.
Very well ourselves. We really would have needed the Public Works Director here to answer those questions, but because we didn't have them here to answer those questions, it just, I think collectively to us, it just made sense to worry about the fire engine and come back to this, this truck being purchased by Public Works at a later time.
Okay. I'm just asking because I too, with my taxes, I'm looking to save anything that we possibly can.
Right.
Because, I mean, unfortunately, you know, we've, in the capital plan, we're planning for an actual engine that isn't...
Right.
You know, used and down the road, and unfortunately, it's been left off a couple of times, and I just don't want to see things, for our department as well, what we need to be kind of skewed by something else that we could save money on, and I was just curious what your thoughts were on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, the, and he still has the option, and Sean still has the budget. He's got an X amount of budgeted for a truck, for a chassis. He's got a new body. There's a lot of equipment that's already here to build that truck, but just, we were more focused at that point on the fire engine, because that was such a good deal. You can't pass that up.
It really was. Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that. I was just looking for a thought process.
Right, so that was our, and then was like, okay, we'll deal with the, when I look at pennies after the fact, because the chassis, you know, what is it, maybe five grand? I mean, it's, it is what it is, and he still has the availability to do that. It's just, and it's the time crunch, because now, once again, if we decide to have him build it, or he builds it, he's still going to take time away from...
Oh, 100%, yeah.
So, I mean, it is, it's pros and cons to it. I just think, with what I, I looked at in the truck, I think the townsfolk are better served longevity-wise with a newer duly dump than trying to build one right now. And I mean, and no, not saying Sean doesn't do a good job. I mean, it's a great job, and I can't wait, because that, the other truck that he built is supposed to be hitting the road this year as well.
Yeah, I was just, and again, this was before your inspection. I was just curious for cost savings, that's all.
Yep.
I was just...
And, I mean, it's, like you said, we've got a, the towns got big-ticket items coming in the five-to-seven-year plan, in five-to-10-year plan. So, I mean, and, you know, a fire truck, potential another rescue, you know? There's just a lot of stuff that the towns, over what I've seen, is over the course of the last 20 years, is just, it's been put off and put off and put off, and, and it's slowly catching up, and we're trying to do the right thing and find the most cost-effective, because I'm a resident too, I don't want my taxes to...
Yeah, no, you guys are doing a great job.
Keep going up and going up, so we're really trying to figure what the best is, and the more input we get, you know, the finance committee, you know, they did an impeccable job last year with the five-year plan, and it's, it got bumped, and we can't, we can't going forward, we can't have that happen.
Right.
It's, we got to, if we're going to, if these guys put all that time and effort into a five-year plan for the town, then we really need to jump on board and follow it through, because that's how we're going to be able to afford that fire truck in five, eight years down the road.
Right.
So...
Yeah, no, I think you guys and all the departments are doing a really great job, and I think Leamington's gone in a really positive direction, and the changes are great. I was just more curious what the thought process was, again, backing up to my tax bill. All right, that's it.
Thank you very much. Steve, yes?
Steve Young. Just real briefly, three weeks from tonight, Financial Advisory Committee will be meeting right after the Select Board meeting, so welcome input from the public.
Three weeks from, from this Thursday, Financial Advisory Committee will be meeting right after our meeting. I look forward to it. Anything else to come before the Board?
I have one thing.
Yes?
Today is Beverly Foster's birthday, out in the front office.
I was hoping you were going there.
And I want to thank, wish our deputy clerk a very happy birthday, and thank you for all you do.
Wish it soon.
Happy birthday, Bev! I have a terrible singing. See, I'm not singing.
You don't want me to sing. I am not the next American Idol.
We can turn the mics around and you guys can sing.
Nobody wants to do that. Cut out.
If there's nothing else to come before the board, I will make, or I will entertain a motion to adjourn.